Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We have the Order of Business, January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, Special Meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council. And this is being called to order at seven oh nine P. M. By myself, Dave Abdallah. Okay? Madam Clerk, can you go ahead and take a roll call, please?
Absolutely. Dave Abdallah.
Here, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
You're here, sir.
Sorry.
Hassan Amad.
Here.
Mo Baydoun.
Here.
Nancy Brier.
Here.
Robert Coniston.
Here.
Coming.
Ray Muscat.
Here.
Tom Wenzel.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a corner.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. At this point, I'm going to go ahead and do the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could lead us in this. Mr. Mayor, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next is our agenda approval.
Council Chair.
Councilman Baydoun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the agenda of the Special Meeting of January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, as submitted.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Baydoun, supported by Councilman Ray Muscat. Is there any discussion? All right? Hearing none? Motion, uh, let's go ahead and take that to a vote. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
The ayes have it.
The ayes have it. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is report from Mayor.
Council Chair, are we going to have any public comments?
We'll get to the public here.
Public comments?
Let's go ahead and take public comments on agenda items only, and you have two minutes. But in your case, Hassan, I promise you next minute, we'll give you three minutes.
We did not have one minute. I don't know what's going on.
We're limited in time. We give two minutes, I gave you three.
We spent too much time talking about raising the people. This is important for the public. Okay. We are voting right now on the approval of the audit report. The audit report is done by one of the best firm in the world. I have no comment other than approve it with maybe some request to look into some of the issues, like can we pay the bond from the water or not? I don't disagree. I think we should pay it from the water, but in a different way, being fair and square with every public who pays water on water meters. I mean, flat rate, flat rate for the public, seven, eight dollars on twenty-four thousand, that will equal to the payment of one million dollars per year. If we have to put it in the general fund, that should be restricted anyway by the state, by the state law and by the federal law, that the amount collected for the bond payment need to be put in a separate, separate depositary account. It's page five on the one I gave you. So it can be put there, it can be budgeted in the general fund and move on. It's not my place to do that, that's my recommendation, but that's not, can it be over, you know, over the CPA? If the CPA agreed with that, that's great. If they have different rate, that's great too. Number two, you know, the statement on, the statement on that we don't have an internal control, I disagree with that. We do have internal control. We failed in some area. Our internal control is, is being watched by our lawyer. Every contract we sign, it goes through the lawyer and make sure that we are in compliance with CFR two hundred, in compliance with the charter. So we have, again, the Charter of Accounting Guidelines by the State of Michigan Treasury Department, we follow that by the T. We're supposed to. Now, if we fail somewhere, that's fine, but that doesn't mean we lack. We do have, we do have internal control policy. Now, I agree with the, I agree with the CPAs here that sometime there is some area we failed in. This is number two. Number three, which is, as I said, you know, we have to look into the legality, whether we can or we can't, you know, the fear from the language of the, of the report of this one. And I thank you, so my recommendation to you is to, to do whatever you think you should, you should be, you should be doing. Now, this, this audit report is independent report. It doesn't matter what you say. It doesn't matter what I say. It's their opinion and their opinion stand. And if you don't agree with it, define it anyway. With rejections.
Thank you, Mr. Jamal. Is there any other public comments from the audience? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and move into comments from people on Zoom. Madam Clerk, anybody on Zoom that has any public comments?
No, no hands up.
Okay, nobody's got their hands up? All right. At this particular point, we're going to move into reports from the mayor.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I recommend that the Dearborn Heights City Council accept the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one financial statement audit report and authorize Plant Moran to file the audit report, which the State of Michigan has outlined in eight A.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Muscat, supported by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I do like the recommendation of changing the language of the bond statement, but that's my opinion of how, how we pay for the bond. Now, that's, again, just my opinion, and I would like to pass this with the recommendation that it be changed somehow. Thank you.
I have a question, Council Chair.
Go ahead, Councilman Baydoun.
Maybe it's for Martin, maybe he can answer this for us. If we leave it as is, like what I know Councilman Muscat has said, Hassan Jamal has said, does this continue to increase the water pricing on residents?
If, so, if you end up paying through water and sewer rates for the bonds, it does increase the water and sewer rates. It's about point three percent. We'll discuss that in a couple of weeks, but it is about point three percent.
We already have very high water rates currently, so adding this extra point three is just going to add on to the excessive high water rates as well?
It's already on there, isn't it?
Yeah. So we'll, so what we're going to do is, so on the twenty-fifth, there's a study session to cover the water and sewer rates in detail. And, you know, I'm happy to address any questions right now too, but I did want to make sure that everybody knows that we will discuss those in a lot of detail.
Over the moving of this table?
So the financial statements right now, the management discussion analysis does talk that it's going to be, the capital bonds are going to be paid through water and sewer rates. However, ultimately, the council can determine how the council wants to pay for those, whether it's through property taxes or some other form, or it's a fixed rate or something else. So that can be done and the budget is independent of the financial statements.
Council Chair, that's just what the recommendation is to change the language on this piece of paper and not on how it's going, because we can change on how it's going to get done. So it's just a language that, and that language can be gone back and changed again later?
We'd have, so, we'd have to reissue the financial statements, so we'd have to go back to our processing and reissue them for the change in the M D N A. What I would recommend doing is it's, the M D N A isn't really binding, it is a description of what your intent is, or very likely it's going to happen, but it doesn't mean that you have to do that.
So we have it on record that it's been spoken about, and I think that's going to be pretty.
I mean, it's definitely up to the council's decision to decide how ultimately the bonds are going to be paid for.
Mr. Miyaki?
Yes. Just briefly, I would not recommend making a change unless bond counsel, it might be
an issue for bond counsel, and we have to be careful about what we say in terms of things having to do with bonds, at least at this, at this juncture. I mean, it obviously can be revisited per Mr. Lanick, but I would be careful about saying something that might.
Can we have bond counsel come before us?
Big expense to. Thank you, thank you, thank you, attorney.
Can we have bond counsel come before us, and we could ask him?
Could, or even just end up asking him for a quick blurb in terms of letter.
Well, that's what I'm, yeah.
Yeah, that's what, that would be my recommendation.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Council, are you doing what you also? Wait, one second, Councilman. Councilman, I just want to make sure. Council, are you doing what you also? Okay, Councilman Amad, go ahead.
So the point three percent that you mentioned, is that the same seven dollars that Mr. Jamal mentioned on the water bill?
So, Mr. Jamal is talking about doing a fixed fee based on number of households per year, and right now, in the analysis that we're talking about a couple of weeks, it is included in the water and sewer rates. It's about point three percent of an impact to water and sewer rates. So it is a relatively minor impact, and I realize every percentage matters, but overall costs do go up. Inflation is pretty significant. Your water purchases from the, from GLEWA is, you know, they keep increasing every year four or five percentage points, so no matter what, your water and sewer rates will have to increase in order to keep up and be able to make those payments.
So it depends, maybe it just depends now, is ten dollars, ten dollars, that we're increased to all dollars?
No. We can talk about this in two years.
Okay. If you don't mind from the audience, let's just keep it what's on the podium.
We'll talk about it, and then, we'll talk about in detail.
During the study session.
During the study session, in a couple of weeks, and it's going to have a lot of details, and I believe the mayor and the management's going to forward the reports to you well ahead of time, as well to be able to look those over. And I welcome any questions, if you wanted to give me a call beforehand and talk about anything, I'm happy to do so, because it is a pretty extensive analysis, so I welcome any questions in the meantime as well.
Thank you, Martin. Councilman also, okay. Next up is Councilman Coniston, then you're next after that, Councilman Wenzel.
Thank you, Councilman Chair, and again, Martin and Plant Moran, thank you for the thorough analysis and the audit that you've done in the past and did a really good job on. And it, the point doesn't go unnoticed by me when you say that, you know, there was a lot of changes with the administration, with our prior mayor all of a sudden, you know, dying, and not one personnel change, but many, so thank you to the administration for getting the voluminous records for municipal corporation that has a fifty million dollar a year budget together and getting the audit done. And, and I'll just say personally, so there are maybe some, what I'll call political statements that can be made about, the numbers are the numbers, you guys are the experts, let's report them and, and not split hairs going forward.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Tom Wenzel, go ahead.
Thank you. You know, by accepting this audit, Gary could, this doesn't hold us to anything, this is just what they looked at, and then it's their opinion of what the numbers are, and it doesn't hold us to anything, does it?
My mic's not working, something, I'm sorry. I'm not sure what you mean by that, Councilman.
I mean, you're, okay, like the water rate issue, you know, just because it's stated in the audit, it's done this way, it's a.
That's correct.
We're just accepting what they, what they found.
And it's a.
It's their opinion.
Right, and as Martin ended up saying, basically, the management decision is not binding on the council in terms of ultimately what the council will end up doing with respect to this. So what you, as a body, decide is what's going to end up being binding ultimately on that issue.
Right. And anything in this audit, it's just what he, they found, is they're, they're reporting to us, it's nothing that we have to follow or anything like that, correct?
Well, it's something we have to be mindful of, because otherwise, the state, which they're going to, namely Plant Moran is going to report it to the state, they will look at it seriously, and if there are issues, they will report to the city and say, you need to take care of some of these things. So it's not just their opinion, no one needs to pay attention to it, it's their opinion, there can be consequences, but ultimately, if there are going to be some issues, they'll have to be brought back to the council as a body, and you'll be able to act accordingly. Does that help you?
Yep, exactly.
And their, their opinion included different things, you know, for corrective action that we have to take, and, and that's binding on us to do, and I know the mayor's got a plan, which we'll go into in a little bit, that should hopefully address most of these issues that came up.
Therefore, I would not create numbers, we reported twenty-eight, we don't want to.
Okay. Hassan, if you don't mind, please, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wenzel. Councilman Wenzel, is there any other questions?
No, I think we should just make the vote on this.
From the council, okay? Seeing none, no more discussion, we're going to go ahead and vote on the fiscal year two thousand twenty, twenty-one financial statement audit report, which I shall say that we had a couple of different study sessions with Plant Moran already on this, so we're not just quickly voting on this. So, motion made by Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilman Coniston, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item eight B, this is proposed engagement letter and professional services agreement with Plant Moran from the mayor.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat, go ahead.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the Plant Moran Professional Services Agreement, Temporary Finance Assistance Addendum to Plant and, Plant Moran, P L L C Engagement Letter. In addition, authorize the mayor to sign the agreement on behalf of the city as outlined in eight B.
Motion made by Councilman Muscat, supported by Councilman Baydoun. Is there any discussion on that? I, I have, was there, okay, so, I would like, for the audience, I'm going to allow you to speak, Council Gary Miyaki, but for the audience, in addition to that, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, if you could give the general audience in, in here and on Zoom what your plan is, what your proposal is, and why this proposal is in place, but go ahead, Council Gary Miyaki first.
Okay. I have reviewed the proposed agreement. I believe that there should be some of the standard language that we have under the Elliot Larson Civil Rights Act, Persons with Disabilities Civil Rights Act, and Title Six, the Appendix A that you'll see on a lot of agreements that I, I do. So, and then there is some language that I have a concern with, but I don't necessarily consider it to be that problematic. I consider it to be a judgment call for the council, and has to do with indemnification language and limitations on liability, and.
There was something in there, on there already.
I'm sorry?
I did see something in the contract on there already from Plant Moran.
Yes, and generally, when I'm asked to review something, I consider it to be raising issue. I don't know if you consider it, if, if the council is already comfortable with, with that, then I won't say anything beyond what I've ended up stating.
No, no, no.
I just, I just consider it to be, when you end up talking about a contract where it's like four hundred thousand dollars and you have an employee come on site, or employees come on site, that raises an issue about if there is some sort of an accident, what does that mean in terms of the city? I look at it as not being like, if this was like a contract or like a construction situation or whatever else, and they have this kind of language in there, I would strongly advise the city not to adopt the contract. I look at this as a situation where you have people basically doing things that it's, you know, clerical accounting, there's never been an accident with like one of their employees before. It's not something where I would look at it as being like language that has to necessarily go, but you got to understand that there could be an issue, you just need to, you know, frankly, a lot of times I end up saying, this language is acceptable because I talked to the department head and there's no real risk involved. But when we're talking about someone being on site at our premises, there is a risk, but it's not like if engineers came out and started to say, yeah, we're going to design this project if it all goes wrong, then we have no liability on that, and, you know, you're, you're going to have to indemnify us.
Okay.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
Can we, can we then just approve this and have the recommendation of Corporation Council?
You could, but I would recommend, I need to have direction from you, I want to make sure that you're good, because otherwise, I'll just do a quick addendum that basically says, you know, this has to, they have to do, whatever they do has to comply with the Elliot Larson Civil Rights Act, Persons with Disabilities.
And that's what I was getting at, with your recommendations to change the language.
Right, but the one thing that I don't want to do is hold things up, because I know that this is pressing, and if, if you feel that it's not an important enough issue in terms of limitations on liability or indemnification, if you sit there and say, Gary, we don't look at what these employees are going to do as being likely to cause the city to end up having an accident.
What's your recommendations, bottom line?
My, my recommendation on this is, frankly, I don't like it, but if you guys feel comfortable, or, I'm sorry, Councilwoman, if you all as a body feel comfortable with it or feel like there's not going to be exposure, then I would say it's not an issue to have this language in here.
So.
I call it, I, I look at it as a judgment call, again, if.
When can you make the changes by?
It's not a construction site, we're not asking them to go up on the roof.
Heart attack, whatever.
Okay, but when can you, Gary, when can you make these recommended change, because you are our attorney, so whatever your recommendations are, we're going to probably go with. When can you have these done by to where we can fully?
I know that this is a top priority for the mayor, so I would have them done by tomorrow morning.
Okay. With that being the case, I'm not necessarily saying we're approving it or not approving it, but if we were to approve it, wouldn't, wouldn't we have to have a special meeting again to approve it, or can we have it, if we, if we approve it today or deny it, but if we approve it today, can we have it done in a way where it's conditional upon your approval of those two particular items, which are not a major issue to us, but they're a major issue to an attorney?
Right, but I don't want to hold things up.
But that's what I'm saying, it shouldn't hold things up if you can have it done pretty quickly.
No, 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 the issue is, is that, I'm saying it's a judgment call on this whole harmless indemnification language.
I would like it in there.
You would, namely, you like the way they have it, which basically keeps them from having.
I like it the way you say it.
Or you would want me to eliminate it?
Okay. You had a question, okay, just one quick second, let me get the rest of the council members. Was it yourself that had a question?
No, I was going to say, the city attorney's point is well taken, this is white collar work. I think it's maybe standard language, and I think the big issue would be where the Plant Moran would say, yeah, okay, we, we'll take it out, because they, it's standard, they probably won't, but it's not like people are going to be going up on the roof or using heavy equipment.
Yeah, but you can heart attacks or.
Even if they have a heart, if somebody has a heart attack, it's not the, the city's liability or anything, it's not, they're not going to be lifting, so it's, Gary said, I'll mention it, but it's, it's really not going to be an issue, it's not that big of a risk.
I'm saying, frankly, it could go either way, that's why I'm raising it. Like, if you, if, if they were like construction engineers and said, we're going to design a building for you, but we want to have this indemnification, and this actually came up a number of years ago, and I was like, absolutely not, this language has got to go. We're not going to end up having you design a building, and then it's going to end up collapsing, and then we're going to have a bunch of people killed, and we're not going to be able to go after you. But it's not like the same thing as like one where, you know, it's a ten thousand dollar contract, and they're just processing forms, which we have a Plant Moran benefits thing that, that's generally been my position, there's not a real exposure here. This is one where you have an employee on site, I think it can go either way, that's why I'm raising the issue. If the council says, Gary, we think that it's, 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 it's not that big of a deal, then I could do an addendum tomorrow morning that just talks about the Elliot Larson, Persons with Disabilities Civil Rights in Appendix A, get that, send that out, it could end up being circulated over to Plant Moran, and, and I would assume that they'd have no problem, because it's required under state law, and we would be done. If they had an issue, if, but if you told me, look, get rid of paragraph twelve and paragraph fourteen, because we agree with you, or we don't want to have the headache or the possible exposure on this, then I could prepare the addendum that way. And, and again, because what it does is it limits their liability, and it says that we will indemnify them from any, any claims except regarding their gross negligence and willful misconduct. So like, if someone's negligent from their company and it causes an accident, then we don't have any claim, or we couldn't, we would, if we got sued, we wouldn't be able to turn around and say, hey, your employee screwed this up, and, and now we are, we have, we have someone suing us, right?
Okay.
It's part of a controlled process, we have.
Okay, Hassan, please. Okay, at this point, before we continue on this specific subject as far as what's in the contract, I'd like, because the audience probably has no idea what we're speaking of, so I'd like, if you guys don't mind, councilmen and women, if the mayor can give a briefing as far as what his thought process is, why we need something like this, why he's recommending it, and what can be the end result from this, and then we'll continue with discussing that, and then from there, whatever specifics on the legalese, we'll go into that. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Council Chair. Again, you know, as we mentioned a few days ago, this is very critical for the city, especially with audit results and some of the stuff that we have seen in the last year. There has been a lot of changes in the city, obviously, with three different controllers. We do, we do have a lot of issues, a lot of things that we need to iron out. We did have several meetings in the last few months with, with Plant Moran team, at least like six or seven meetings in the last probably four or five months. We're going through different concerns and issues that we need to correct, so we, we could not really engage, you know, Plant Moran at the time, because, you know, they're doing the audit. So that's why I mentioned to you guys at the last meeting, that it's very critical that we get this audit done, approved, uploaded, then the second step is to get this engagement letter, to get them to come in and to help us with all the findings that we've had for the last several years. And my, my objective, my goal at the next audit, you know, not to have, as an auditor, you know, the stuff that I've done, I mean, you might find minor issues, but a lot of the significant issues, I want to make sure they're taken care of before the next audit. And again, the state is looking very closely at the city of Dearborn Heights. You know, we've gotten several letters, and that's why we need this thing done ASAP, because I want to be able to tell the state when they call me, that, hey, we have a team in place, and we're taking every step, every precaution, we're being proactive, and we're trying to get everything done before they give us a call. And I can guarantee you, once this audit report is uploaded to the state, I'm going to get a call from the state.
How many years are you proposing that Plant Moran, in this phase of Plant Moran's work, they would like them to be there for?
It's got to be just for this year. You know, that's what we're talking about. I mean, it might not even be a full year, you know, they're going to come in, they're going to try to help us, so we get everything up to speed, and, you know, we got to obviously report to the council, the council's going to be aware on a monthly basis, everything that we're doing, and as mentioned before, you know, we have to be doing a, it's not just a, there's, there's a lot of concerns that we also have, that we've gotten systems in place from the nineteen hundreds, you know, that probably when a city started, that we have to actually get a lot of these things taken care of, ironed out, so we can move us, propel us into the future. Right now, we're far behind, and that's why we ask Plant Moran to come in, they've been, they're well aware of all the issues that we have. And again, you know, we, we need, this is very significant to the city, because, you know, you're talking about, I mean, there's a lot of stuff that we discussed in a closed session with personnel, but this is very critical, we need to get it taken care of.
Okay, but one of the things that you, I'm just going to, I'm going to say, one of the things that would have to be done is, Plant Moran, in their current capacity as an auditor, would not be able to do that for us anymore, so we'd have to get a second auditor, is that correct?
Well, right now, they're going to be, if we.
They're going to finish this audit.
Yeah, yeah, once the audit's done, okay, technically, they can engage with this right now, with engagement, coming into the city and helping us, but they cannot help us with next year's audit.
Next year's audit, correct.
Yeah, and that's something else that we're, we're putting a proposal together, so we can get another company to come and do an audit for us next year.
Next year.
So it won't be Plant Moran.
And I like that particular part of it, because now you'll get, no offense to Plant Moran, a second set of eyes doing an audit for us versus the one that we've used for many years, and see where that takes us as a possibility.
But my, I mean, my, again, my goal is, once they come in, they do this, the next company comes in, there's not going to be any findings, right?
Be good.
Because they're going to do a, well, I can't say that term, but they're going to do a, a bang up, I mean, a really great job.
Okay, Councilman Tom Wenzel, go ahead.
I don't see anything in this agreement about the length of the agreement. You said a year, what's that, fiscal year or a year when it's signed, or, is, is there's nothing in this agreement that says this is good for one year?
It has the hours on here.
It has the hours.
Yes.
That's, that's my next, that's my next, my next question about the hours.
Council Chair, can you? Yes, go ahead. Please announce your names, or.
Good evening, my name is Brian Camiller, I'm a.
a year, what's that, fiscal year, or a year when it's signed, or, is, is there's nothing in this agreement that says this is good for one year?
It has the hours on here.
It has the hours?
Yes.
That's, that's my next, that's my next, my next question about the hours.
Council Chair, can you?
Yes, go ahead, please announce your names, or?
Good evening, my name is Brian Camiller, I'm a partner with Plant Moran, and I lead our group that does this internal accounting work for local units of government, so, answer the question about the duration, it's either one day, or as long as you want us to be here, so it's open-ended, but at any point, you can notify us that our services are no longer required, and we're done that day, so you're not locked into one year, you're not locked into five years, when management determines that we're done, we're done.
Is that stated in here, or is there a penalty for doing that?
There's no ending.
There's no ending date, that councilman.
I mean, is there a penalty, say, if, monthly, now we go, whoa, this ain't what we want, and you go, well, it's, it's going to be like a severance pay, yours.
Mr. Jamal, please.
No, our fee is, it's hourly rate, so for time incurred, if we work for one week, and you tell us to go home, you pay us for one week.
Basically.
Okay, go ahead, Councilman.
Paragraph 14 says termination of engagement, this agreement may be terminated by either party upon written notice.
So, the reason why that's 30 days is, in the event there's something you want us to finish, we would be held to finish it, but if you just said, you know, we don't like the way this is working, we don't want to be where we're not wanted.
Yeah, and it doesn't, it doesn't actually say 30, 30 days is from what I can tell here, but, I mean, essentially, we would probably end up doing that, but again, it's, it's an at-will engagement, Councilman Wenzel, so we're, we're not stuck with something for years.
Okay, they're, they're estimating, I don't know, we're going to get this figure, $2,500 hours, because they don't know exactly what to do, but, and there's not, there's nothing in there not to, not to exceed, but we could always, like you say, stop at any time, and $178 an hour, but that's going to be adjusted in July, July 1st.
Correct.
It's going to be, it's going to be more, more likely more than $178 an hour.
Yes, it's, I think a 3% inflation factor, but the 178 is what the city has already contracted with Plant for any additional services, so we're just continuing the same rate structure that the city has been using for several years.
And, Council Chair, if I may?
So, just quickly, so your plan would be, you'd, can you explain it to the audience in maybe three, four, five sentences, what your plan is, what do you do in general, in layman's terms?
Yes, sir, our, what we do as a group is internal accounting for local units of government, that for whatever reason, do not have the manpower, or the current skills and expertise, to maintain a finance department, that results in an audit without any findings. So, we are going to come in, Carolyn Lorenz, my managers here with me, our team will do the bank recs, our team will maintain the general ledger, we will do the audit prep for next year, and work with the new external auditors. Now, I, I, I don't want to correct the mayor, but with the, the idea that we are going to get the next audit to not have any findings, we can't guarantee that, because you're six months into the year already, and so, if there are things that have occurred in the first six months of the year, that are determined to be findings, we can't make that go away, so those things are going to happen, but I can say, that by the time we get to June 30, and then spend 60 to 90 days getting ready for the audit, and working with the new auditors, the year-end balances are not going to require additional adjustments, so you might get written up for a July 21 bank rec that wasn't done timely, because that already happened, but, once we get the bank recs caught up, over the next couple months, March or April is going to be done well within 30 days.
It's going to save us money in the long run.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Councilman Bedou, then Mayor, then.
He's, Robert Coniston.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Two other things, now, let's not be fooled that we could terminate you at any time, because once you get involved, you're, you're controlled of all these issues, these books and all these things, we're not going to say goodbye, because you are already controlling all this stuff, so, yeah, so let's not, let's not say we can, you know, it'd be foolish for us to terminate you, and then have to start all over somewhere, and then there's, I mean, I'm, I know this has to be done, the cost is what really concerns me, all the little things, like, I've seen there's one in there about travel costs, and what are the travel costs that would be incurred here, coming from where they live to here, the city?
The only travel cost would be any time in excess of a regular commute, so I don't have any intention of bringing anyone from, you know, way out of town, or out of state, there's no, no airplanes, no hotels, none of that, all, almost our entire team lives in Metro Detroit, so if they have a normal half-hour commute, and it takes 45 minutes, you know, they're on the clock after the first half hour, so it would be 15 minutes of travel time.
Okay, just, just to be clear on all this, this, right now, when you look at it, it's $445,000, right, now, obviously, there's going to be other costs incurred, I mean, are we looking at a half a million dollars?
No, sir, in fact, our original proposal, taking our 1.6 FTEs for 2,500 hours is approximately $400,000, but, over time, we believe that there are additional efficiencies to be gained, and those efficiencies would save money, now, you're already engaged with my team, so we've been doing accounting service work here, for the last three audits, to, on a very minor basis, help the controller, so that goes away, so, a lot of the things that, that Martin's team does for you, that you get charged for, would be replaced by us, not the additional auditor, so there's a savings there as well, the audit fee, with a absolutely clean trial balance handed over to the auditor, their fee will be less, so, you know, there are additional charges for a messy or, or late audit, those should go away as well, and it is possible that through either technology or process, that there are other people within the city that could be reallocated to other departments, and so, the cost of the finance department would go down for those individuals, so, the net total in our original proposal was, after all is said and done, it would be a net cost to the city of approximately $47,000.
Thank you.
Okay, wait, I have one more, this is important, your experience at this, with other cities, I'm assuming, right?
Yes, sir, our department has 20.
What is your, what is your average duration of time spent, I mean, I mean, do you stay for one year, or are you, are there for, forever, sort of, definitely, what you're in there, are you going to say, are we going to say, we want to keep you, is that what happens?
So, our group does both short-term and long-term projects, the smallest job that I've done in the last year was $600, but we've also done work at the city of Pontiac, where we became their controller's office for the last 15 years.
Well, some, similar to our, our city?
Well, in size-wise, sure, but it's, if, if you don't need us, we leave, other cities have made the determination that they would rather have us, than ever have to bring in and hire their own people, train them, when they leave, replace them, when we're here, we have a very deep bench, and we are experts in the field, we, quite honestly, we've built a better mousetrap, when it comes to how to do internal accounting work for a local unit, so, you may determine that you love the way we do the work, and you never want us to go away, or you may determine, we like having our own people, Plant Moran is a temporary solution, and as soon as the job is done, we can, can move on, and anything in between is also fine, so, like I said, we have permanent engagements, we have very short-term engagements, it's entirely up to the city, what you want to do, and as long as you want to do it.
Okay, you mentioned that net, the net cost is, you know, you're just guessing off topic, 45,000, now, that, say we keep you on for a second year, you say, hey, we did all this, so we're not going to be here for $2,500 this next year, right, it might only be 1,500, or 1,000 hour to 500, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, one, there's a lot of cleanup to do, that's to mention, there's process improvements, once a process is improved, you don't necessarily have to improve it again, so all of that, there's going to be, in the first year or so, there could be a significant amount of work that would go away thereafter, and we might take care of it in the first year, and then hand the reins over to a city employee, but again, that is going to be up to the, to city management.
But the processes can also be savings for the city, and that you're going to have better techniques in place to be able to save us, the redundancy of some work that's being done sometimes.
Yes, sir.
We also have, Councilman?
Thanks, Council Chair, yes.
Council, okay, so next up is Councilman Bedou, then we have the mayor, then we have Councilman Robert Coniston, then Councilman Amari.
So, for me, I just want to make it clear to a lot of the residents at home, we had this conversation with the mayor and the council, and I just want everybody to know that this is a great thing, like, it's a good thing, it's propelling, like the mayor says, our city forward, so I'm, and it's not that, you know, anybody's saying anything wrong, I know everybody just has some questions, but it just seems like, kind of going back and forth, because we want to make all the right decisions, but I want the residents at home, and everybody watching, to know that this is a great thing for the city, because we're basically auditing almost our biggest financial thing for the city, correct? So I just wanted to get that one underway, but, my first question to you is, when will you guys start, so let's just say this gets approved, if it gets approved, when do you guys begin?
Well, we want to take care of the addendum that the city attorney wants to take care of, and then we could start immediately, we, as I said, we've already been engaged with you on a minor basis, so we already have access to your general ledger, we're already familiar with your employees, we have a good working relationship with Mr. Sabuda, so we could start immediately.
Okay, my next question is, I also agree in the contract, it says that you guys can be working remotely and in person.
Correct.
Now, now, you know, I know that the state is no longer, you know, the state of emergency is no longer in place, this is an expensive amount of money that's also being paid, I'd like to personally see a lot more in-person, working more hands-on deck, are we going to have somebody that's going to be hands-on deck, I would say, for the four days of the week?
It's going to be a mix, quite honestly, and the reason for that is, if, on any given day, if there is not going to be a full day's worth of work, I don't want to send somebody to the city, have you incur any costs that might be for travel, there may not be, but I want them to be as efficient as possible, so if, on a Wednesday, it is a four-hour workday to get, to accomplish whatever needs to be accomplished, I only want my team to work four hours that day.
I respect that, but what I go want to see is, one day in the office, three days not there all week, you get what I'm saying?
No, I understand.
I personally, I'm just me, and I think Councilman, although, we want to see people, like, I'm always, like the mayor has said, we're there, and, and I want to be able to see the engagement, I want to be able to come and, you know, bring in someone from the residents, and say, hey, you know, this is time, Rand is coming in, and they're digging deep, and they're assisting the residents of you behind.
Yeah, we'll do our best to maximize the time in office.
And that's something that I'm always going to, you know, kind of question, and I've called Martin, and, you know, and, that's what I really do want to see for the residents in, or, you know, the actual city, and that's all I have, so I think this is a great idea, I hope that, you know, my council will also vote on this, and we can move forward with it.
Thank you, Councilman, next up is, Mr. Mayor, please.
So, some of the questions already, what I was going to mention has already been mentioned by, by Brian, about this is going to actually save us money in the long run, especially it's going to put a lot of great processes in place, and we actually, we talked about the engagement when they start, we wanted to have them start this week, but obviously, you know, it was deferred to today, so I'm hoping, you know, once, once it gets approved, again, you know, I want them to start as soon as Tuesday, and the reason why is because, like I said, when this audit gets submitted to the state, the state's going to have questions, and I want to have part of our corrective action, hey, we have a team, gap team is here, they're already helping, they're, they're doing stuff, so this is very critical, believe me, this is very critical to the city, to say something that, hey, we have a team on deck, we're doing this, because they don't want to hear any more excuses, that we don't have the right team on hand, helping us get through this, and as you know, you know, we, we don't have a deputy controller for, for months, so, there's, there's a lot of things, you know, that, you know, we talked about in the session till midnight, so with that, you know, again, you know, we, this is very critical that we get it done, just for the health of our city.
Does the cost justify the opportunity that we have?
Well, I think this is a, from the discussions that I've had with several, several people, and also with David Sabuda, you know, who's, who's been helping us, and he's very detailed, I mean, he's found out some stuff that every council member that's been here for a while has asked questions, that actually, Mr. Sabuda, who had not, no idea what was said in the past, he's actually brought it to my attention, so, and, you know, he thinks this is a great idea, I think it's an, it's an excellent idea that we need to move to this, it's going to save the city a lot of money in the long run.
Now, we'll still obviously need a deputy controller, is that correct?
Well, this is what we need, this is part of the assessment with the team, that we're going to go through, we're going to be talking about this on a weekly basis, to go through, to see what we really need for reorganization.
Will they be working on the controller's office only, or maybe actually, or in addition to other departments?
That's, that's a good question, Council Chair, we actually have a plan to actually also get into the treasurer's office, to see what's, you know, we got to do self-audit over there as well, just to make sure that the treasurer's office is also, has all the processes in place, and to make sure that we have good, good, good things going on over there as well, because we do have some concerns in both offices, as of right now.
So, one of the things that you had in your vision was a monthly audit, this is basically going towards that vision, but, but you mentioned, you wanted, you mentioned to me, in a conversation with you, that you want to have everything throughout City Hall audited.
Exactly.
And I commend you for that, because that, that's good, but are they going to be doing other departments too, are we looking at just one or two departments?
Well, there, there's a plan to do every department in the city.
Good.
We do have a plan to do that, so, we are, we are going to self-audit ourselves, to make sure, again, we mentioned the word right size, with every department, we have the right people, the right skills, and to make sure that everybody that needs to do whatever they need, that it's actually, they have the right training to do what they need to do.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Bedou, you have a question still?
You're going to bridge out, Council Chair.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Robert Coniston, go ahead.
Thank you, Council Chair, and Brian, thank you for coming, it sounds, you know, our, our books are very important, four questions, first being IT, so, I know, for example, when I do my taxes, my brokerage house, I can download from the brokerage house, the basis, the gains, all that, so, so you come in, controller's office, treasurer's office, who does the, the actual IT, will that be you, or that will be our, we have a new director of IT with the city of Dearborn, I assume that's going to go forward?
Well, Tarek has been, is, is on deck, you know, at the City Hall, he's been doing a lot of our stuff, so, Tarek will be doing that.
Is he retired from city?
No, no, he's not going for that, yeah.
So, the IT, you'll do that, but like, if there's a way to balance the, reconcile the city bank accounts quicker, using, you know, better technology, you, you might recommend that, but that's for our IT to do that.
Well, really, so you have the BSNA software system, which is a fantastic package, 80% of our clients here in Michigan use it, it's wonderful, and quite honestly, it's my favorite, the technology exists, the city may not have been using it in the most optimal way, so, we're not going to be introducing any new technology to the city, but we know how to use it the right way, and if there's any additional, the only other technological advancement, as it were, might be downloading information from your bank, and uploading that information into BSNA, versus doing, you know, everything being manual, or having to be, you know, keyed in, there, there is some ability to upload things to the bank rec process, to, to match things, but we're not IT people, we're CPAs.
Okay, thank you.
IT's always the big, you know, it can be a big, I just have three other questions, does this include reports to the state of Michigan, the, the, you know, every year, more and more requirements reporting to the state treasurer, state of Michigan?
Yeah, I believe that the engagement letter specifically mentions some of the year-end reports that follow the audit, like the F65, or F51 qualifying statement, so those still need to be filed, once our audit team uploads, and whether Mr. Sabuda does it, or we do it, those will get done in very short order.
All right, and then, so, like, for example, the mayor mentioned the treasurer's office, the controller's office, as far as personnel and so forth, do you make recommendations, or is that not part of the scope of the engagement?
So, one of the nice things about our group is, we're not bound by the same rules as the auditors are, so, if we're in the office every day or most days, if we're having weekly conversations with the mayor, we're part of his team, and so, we function like one of his team, so if you think that a member So, if you think that a member of his team would make a recommendation to do anything, personnel-wise, operationally, whatever, that's what we would be doing. So, yes, if there, if we see anything that we feel could be done quicker, better, more accurately, whatever, those are the conversations that we'll be having.
But those are recommendations, whether the administration wants to...
Council chair, if I may, that's a great point. Actually, their team, as Brian mentioned, they have been on deck for a while trying to help us, we've been meeting, and they have made already a lot of suggestions, but we haven't taken anything on, right, any of the suggestions, obviously, because we're waiting for them to come in full-time to go through this process to help us, but they have made a lot of recommendations already.
Work becomes more and more highly skilled, and a lot of people, they were at this department, they bumped, and they went over to that department, they, you know, the training. And then, last question, does this not need to go out for bid? Is this a contract that needs to go out for bid or not for bid?
No, to services.
You can't hear me?
No. It's services, you don't need to go out for bid.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, councilman. Next up is Councilman Hassan Amat, go ahead.
Thank you, council chair. I think he answered my question. My question was, I think, are you going to be working as one team with city employees, or are you going to be just training on implementing new process or procedures on how to do their accounting?
We'll be fully integrated with the city's existing team, working side by side. So, we'll be bringing new ideas, making suggestions, hopefully, our suggestions are heard, and we can implement as many as possible. But at the same time, if the city doesn't like our recommendation, and what they're doing is determined to be better, that's fine. But we will be working with the comptroller, if there's a deputy comptroller, with the mayor's office, with the treasurer, it will be almost as if we are city employees.
All right, I like it, it's all good.
Now, you're also going to be a fresh set of eyes, because as I understand, although you're Plant Moran, and our former auditor is Plant Moran, you're a separate subsidiary, separate segment of Plant Moran, is that correct?
Separate department, but we all work under the same house, so, I mean, Martin and I are partners, we're colleagues on several accounts. But we look at things a little bit differently. So, I was an auditor for about 15 years, but over the last eight years, I've been on the city's side of the table. So, things that the auditors don't necessarily look at, we're neck-deep in every day.
Okay, thank you. Was there any others? Go ahead, councilman.
Any idea, like, how many people would be on your team? I mean, it sounds like, like, team, including a partner or a principal manager, but you know how many people would be?
Well, so, I'm a partner, but you don't want me out every day. You want the stronger accountants. So, Carolyn is the manager, and then we'll also assign an accounting consultant, who will be good for doing the bank recs and a lot of the very detailed work. Now, scheduling-wise, I mean, last year, we served 80 communities. So, you know, if one person has to go to another client, then we can bring in someone else, but with Carolyn and I managing the team, we'll be coaching and teaching, so there's not a learning curve if we ever have to swap anybody out.
Thank you. Councilman, you have another question? Councilman Tom Munson, go ahead.
To the best of your recollection or ability, is there going to be any cost to the city other than the agreed fees, you know, such as some kind of technology change that we have to make to accommodate you guys, or some kind of office space, or some kind of assistant, a runner on our behalf to do work for you? Any cost to the city at all?
Not to my knowledge.
I'm sorry, council chair.
Go ahead, Mayor.
So, with the technology, I said, you know, it's there, but we under-urized it. Just to give you an example, when we did the budget, this last year's budget, they're supposed to go in, the proper way to do it is to go in and put the budget on BSNA. There are several, I'm not mentioning names, they actually put them on, they wrote them on a piece of paper, because they had no idea how to put it on BSNA. This is something that, even though this is a few departments from the city, they were not able, they didn't even know how to operate, you know, BSNA. So, again, you know, we got to bring in training, you know, we have a lot of ideas, and again, you know, we can go through this for hours, but there's a lot of stuff we have in place to take care of, you know, the issues that we have. But something as simple, you know, as BSNA, we do have, they could go in there, they're supposed to do it, but nobody's ever done it, and that's why most of the people never done it.
Mr. Mayor, do you anticipate them, Plant Moran, doing any kind of training to our current employees in any way?
Well, I mean, we haven't really discussed that, but they have brought up a lot of stuff that could be, we could use for training, and I know they've trained me for the last, you know, since I've been appointed since last January, they've taught me a lot of things, and I mentioned to Martin just like a few meetings back, you know, I mean, take out, I'm not a CPA or, you know, an accountant, I don't know how they can do it, but, I mean, it's just some of the stuff that they showed me, you know, it's just, you know, it's amazing, and I know we can, whoever is behind as a comptroller, you know, or anybody in the department or the treasurer's office, they can take that and they can train others. So, again, you know, as they mentioned, they're going to put a good process in place, so the process, you know, that they can, we can use for training as well.
So, something you see, and you say, hey, to this employee, I think he should be doing it this way, and you will show him how?
They have, they have already.
It'll just be X amount of hours, you know, onto the budget, onto the fee, right? There wouldn't be any, a different kind of category or...
No, no, it's all under the same hourly rate, but I mean, if we're onsite in an eight-hour day, we're going to deal with and communicate with half a dozen or more people within various departments. And if we see something that we think could be done differently, then we will make the suggestion. If they say, I don't know how to do that, then we would show them. So, I said before that we're working side by side with your employees. We are. So, if there's anything that we can do to help someone or support someone, then that is part of our role within the department.
Okay, thank you.
Council chair.
Go ahead, councilman.
Okay, I have a question. In lieu of our long-term relationship with Plant Moran, is there any possibility of our being grandfathered in at 178 an hour, or a max of 180 per hour?
Every year, we, our billing rates go up, and a lot of that is completely out of either my hands or Martin's hands, so it's, that's a higher-level decision, and I don't believe that that would be made.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Ray Muscat?
Just a quick comment. You know, we're already four, five months behind doing what we're doing. So, obviously, there was a big mess somewhere in the years 219 to early 220. Okay, so, we're already way behind, and the further we stall, the further we're going to get behind. And my big thing is, I understand Corporation Council's objection, but I think we need to get this ball, the snowball going down the hill, and get some momentum right away. That's my personal opinion, gentlemen. I've been here a long time, and I've seen this and gone through this, and I've never seen it happen like this before. So, I think we need to get it straightened out, and I think these people here are the best ones to do it.
Thank you, councilman. Do you have any other, yes, go ahead.
What I was going to say, very, like, I was very skeptical, and, you know, that we couldn't do a lot of this in-house, but every task these days is more and more complicated, more and more, so I think this is a good idea.
Okay. Before we go ahead and vote on this, I just want to make sure, now, we can go back to the subject that was of interest to you, Councilor Gary Miatka, our attorney. If, and again, it's if, so it's not like I'm making the decision, but if we go through with this, because obviously, the changes he's recommending, if we're not going through with this, this is irrelevant, so I'm not necessarily telling you guys which way to vote, but if we went through this, with the changes that you are recommending, which I think, my personal opinion would be a good idea, obviously, whatever it is that you're recommending, we'll put them on there, can that still be voted on and approved with those changes being made later?
I'm sorry.
So, whatever recommended changes you are recommending, provided we as a body agreed to this, and provided that we as a body agreed to move forward with whatever recommended changes, can we still approve this now, or would that have to be done after your changes? I just want to clarify to the council.
You could prove it, I wouldn't recommend that, because of your, the changes you wanted to, I've discussed, would end up basically requiring an addendum. So, for example, if they started to come out, did work, someone got hurt, then we would end up having an issue, and it'd be too late after the fact to try to change it. The changes that I've recommended, I guess part of the question is, Brian, do you anticipate there being a problem with your legal with regard to what I've discussed as possible changes?
The first two, not a problem at all. I mean, we have to follow state and federal law, so adding it to the contract is not a big deal. The indemnification issue is something that I would have to talk to my own council about and agree on exactly the wording, not to strike the paragraph entirely.
Okay, and that would be both for the paragraph having to do with indemnification and limitations liability, so it'd be paragraph 18 and paragraph 12. I mean...
Just to point out, the terms and conditions in that engagement letter are the exact same as the last four or five assignments that we've had with the city. Nothing's changed in those letters, and I believe it's the same as the audit.
The only difference is, is I haven't necessarily ended up reviewing those.
He didn't review the whole...
Yeah, and I'm not saying, again, it's a question of what the council and mayor want to end up doing, they don't have to follow my recommendations.
Okay.
But I would say, with respect to the items that he said are fine, I can do an addendum tomorrow morning and send that out. If, however, the issues regarding paragraph 12 and 18 are an issue for you as a body and/or the mayor, then I could prepare the language, it could end up being circulated to their legal counsel, and we could see what they end up saying. Or if you sit here and say, yeah, we don't think there's that much exposure, Gary, thanks for your opinion, but no thanks, then I can end up basically being in a position to do the simple addendum with the information that they are, they think is fine. Again, I'm not trying to impede anything, it's just when this is presented to me and I'm supposed to give an opinion on it, I feel duty-bound to make sure that I raise these issues.
I appreciate it. Councilman Muscat, good.
Yeah, I mean, if we can terminate anytime we want, and you work on it with your legal department, and all of a sudden, you guys butt heads and can't do it, we can always just terminate, right?
Well, the problem is, again, we might incur an obligation in the meantime.
Well, and I understand, but, you know, the thing is, I could get in, get in a car accident and die going home. I mean, that happens all the time.
Actually, I think it's a very good idea, because if you're able, I mean, chances are, you're going to come to some sort of agreement.
Absolutely, you will. We've been, we've been partners for a long time.
And with that being the case, maybe we could just negotiate with them, get it signed, and then get them to go ahead to get started. Because the biggest issue that was of concern to the mayor was turning in the audit, turning in the audit to the state, and once that's done, then technically, we can hire Plant Moran for this particular position a month later.
Oh, no, I want it done now.
No, no, no. I'm not saying I suggest, I get that, but what I'm saying is, it's not, if the audit is not turned in to the state, we cannot hire them.
Correct.
And there's a deadline for turning in the audit. What I am saying is, once that audit is turned in, now we have no more deadline. We have a good idea to get it done right away, but there's no deadline, and therefore, I presume that our attorney could knock it out between him and their attorney within a couple days.
Yeah, but then we got to wait two weeks to vote on it, and that's two weeks late.
Well, you can prove it, see, the reason I've raised the issue in the way I have is because if you sit here and say, we really don't care about the issues that you've raised, Gary, like, councilman, the captain's kind of like, he doesn't seem to think that it's going to end up being an issue. If the rest of you feel that way, or a majority of you feels that way, then I'll just do the simple addendum tomorrow morning and send it over to them and send it to everyone else, and we'll be done with it, and over to the clerk's office, and we'll be done with it. If, however, you feel that there is enough of a risk, or you feel like we don't want this to be an issue, then either one of two options could go for. One, I could do the simple addendum, send it, and we could go from there, and I could try to negotiate with them with regard to 12 and 18. Of course, after that time, we've already entered into an agreement, and I don't know how much leverage you have in terms of negotiation. Or we could sit here and say, you could say, we approve it, subject to Corporation Council negotiating this out.
And that's what I wanted to do before. That's what we wanted to do before.
Okay.
I mean, I made the motion.
And we've been without this team, Plant Moran doing what we're, they're recommended to do with, for, since 1963, so I think an extra few days or a week will survive.
Okay, so it's...
My question is, what is, Mayor, what do you feel about this? What do you think?
I mean, I think we should go with two, just approve it, pending on the changes.
Well, that's what I want to do, approve it, depending on the change, that's all.
What does he need to do to...
I just, I make my, I amend my motion, okay? The Dearborn Heights City Council approved Plant Moran's professional service agreement, temporary finance assistance amendment to Plant and Moran, P-L-L-C engagement letter. In addition, authorize the mayor to sign the agreement on behalf of the city, and with the recommendations that our city, that our city attorney...
How about, how about, subject to... I'm sorry, subject to an appropriate addendum as approved by Corporation Council?
As stated by our Corporation Council.
Supported.
As outlined in 8B.
And authorize the mayor to the control...
We already have that.
No, you don't have it.
I said, authorize the mayor to sign the agreement on behalf of the city.
Okay, Hassan, please, nothing from the audience.
It's not part...
Point of order. Hassan, please, nothing from the audience, please.
With the sign of one, you may think you got to move on.
Okay, but he's already read that. Okay, I'll read the last sentence for his...
In addition, authorize the mayor to sign the agreement on behalf of the city as outlined in 8B.
Thank you. Motion made by Councilman Muscat, supported by Councilman Bedu, is there any other further discussion?
That includes 12 and 18, correct?
Correct. That includes you making the corrections, like, the Councilman Muscat.
Well, that's, that's what I'm, my understanding is, I'm supposed to negotiate with them about 12 and 18, and a language that we can live with. Is that, is that what everyone is?
Yes.
Okay, all right, that's what I'm going to do.
We're approving, but the mayor and you will not sign off until the negotiations are over, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Correct.
Thank you. That could be done in a day, or two days.
Any other further discussions? There should be none. Hearing none, we're going to go ahead and take it to a vote. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed?
They better not be.
No.
No, that's not right.
Any opposed?
No.
Hearing none, the ayes have it, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the opportunity, we look forward to working with you.
Council chair, I just want everyone to know that this was a tough decision for all of us, it's a very expensive endeavor.
It was tough, but we got it done.
And we put a lot of thought into this, and we pondered on it for several days, and did a lot of research, and we found, we determined that with the cost, it is probably the best thing that we need right now.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is reports from city officials. Is there any reports from city officials? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and go to the next item on the agenda, which is from members of the public. First one, before we start with members from the public, I'd like to start with comments from council members. Is there any comments from any council members?
No.
Hearing none, go to the next one, any announcements?
Dave?
You have an announcement, go ahead. Councilwoman Nancy Brier.
On January 27th, at 7:00 PM, the meeting of the South Dearborn Heights Civic Association, the main speaker will be Judge David Turfee, and I'd like to have as many people as possible attend, that location is 3335 South Beach, Daly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, councilwoman. Any other? None? You had one?
I don't have one.
Madam Turp?
I don't, I just have a comment.
We're always willing to listen, go ahead.
Okay, I just really, really want to thank Dave Anderson, the head custodian here at Crestwood, as well as David Green, who is our, the IT person here, they made this happen, you know.
Yes, it is. Put my hand.
Thank you.
All right, next, I'm sorry, yes, go ahead, councilman.
All right, I'm so sorry, I'm going to keep it quick.
Yeah, they all helped out, but Lynn also helped orchestrate this as well, so thank you, Lynn and Chris.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have public comments from the audience. This will be cut to two minutes each, and come on up.
Council Chair, I want to just make one quick statement. As everyone may or may not know, our city treasurer had surgery today, and let's all pray for her and give her our best wishes.
Wish her the best of health.
Yes.
Good evening.
Go ahead.
I would like you to revise your approval to include authorize the mayor and the controller to sign the necessary warrant and the treasury to pay the payment. Otherwise, you are going to receive every time a payment can come to you. You asked to minimize that. This is the internal control process. So either you will send your approval of that one to include and authorize the mayor and the controller to sign the warrants and the treasury to pay, and that's, that's exactly what we do every time. Now, and you can say up to, up to, not to exceed the $410,000, which is in the agreement, based on the hourly basis. So that will give the mayor and the controller...
So that's the controller and, and the treasurer, or the mayor and the controller?
Exactly like that, and authorize the mayor and the controller to sign the necessary warrant.
Okay, I can do that right now, thank you.
And the treasurer to pay, to pay, not to exceed the $410,000, which is in the contract.
Okay, Councilor Gary Miyatki.
He's gone.
Mr. Miyatki. Mr. Miyatki.
Mr. Miyatki, your services are required.
Okay, now, before we do that, I want to make sure from Madam Clerk, and eventually from Mr. Miyatki, because the motions have already been made and approved.
And voted on.
And voted on. So with that being the case, but before we do though, if you don't mind, Hassan, with I explaining everything, there's a sentence that you mentioned, Councilor Gary Miyatki. Mr. Hassan Jamal, during the public comments section, mentioned a sentence that needs to be added on this motion. The motion's already been approved and voted on, but with that being the case, just in case, obviously, he's got some experience too, would you repeat this sentence again, Mr. Jamal, so that we can make sure from our council it needs to be...
authorize the mayor and the controller to sign the necessary warrant and the treasurer to pay the warrant?
Yeah.
Not to exceed the $410,000, which is in the contract.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Jamal, go ahead.
Okay, two issues. That's if you want to end up authorizing prepayment. If you want to, if you want to monitor things, then you would not end up using that kind of language, as it goes. If you want to authorize prepayment, then you can do so up to a certain amount, as Mr. Jamal has suggested, and for certain contracts, that's a great idea. I don't know if you feel that way with regard to that, you know, I...
This one, this one's hourly, so we're not authorizing a prepayment, obviously, but we can, I know we can say...
You could, but you don't have to, and, and that's why I, that's why I raised that issue as something that you can do, but a lot of times, like for my bills and for other bills for professional service, it comes to you.
And I'd like to see it come to us, so we can monitor it and then have questions on it, say, I think we've exceeded it, let's stop it right now.
And that's, and that's why with Mr. Jamal mentioning that, I agree that it's a good procedure to have in place a lot of the time, but knowing how you like to evaluate professional services, I wanted to raise that issue in that way.
Well, also, sometimes some things look great on paper, and we've all experienced that in almost anything in our lives, and until the mayor and his administration, 30 days from now, when a bill comes up, I'm sure, you know, Mr. Mayor and his administration will be able to give us an update and an assessment as to how well this is working. So with that being the case, I, I don't see a need to change it, and Gary, you're agreeing with that, is that correct?
Fair claims.
So, 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 but what we'll see is, we'll see this on our current claims, and we'll have a beginning balance, and we'll see a total running of what it is and a balance decreasing as we pay. Correct?
Thank you. Correct. Is there any other?
You can see from them, you know.
Is there? Please, I'm asking very nicely, I'm trying not to be rude, please. Okay, next, is there any other comments from the public? We've already done the city council.
We've already done it.
So if you are so interested, you've come down as a resident.
You hit your damper for the first time.
Okay. Is there any other comments from the public? Yes, go ahead.
We have one on Zoom.
Yes, I don't know, I'm going to go to Zoom next, but if there's nobody from the public, okay, Madam Clerk, can you go ahead and bring in people from Zoom?
We have...
Hey, Amy?
Yeah?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. Drapkowski, Columbia Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan, Wayne County. I just got to say, I'm glad you guys voted this in, because there has been many times that we in trim is made suggestions that have fallen on deaf ears. And, you know, you all know for the past several years, there's been a spiral to get things corrected and on the books properly, and I think this is a great move to push this city more further to getting things corrected and doing it properly. So I just wanted to say, thank you for moving us along, and, you know, Mayor, you got your hands full, but you're heading in the right direction, and thank you.
Thank you, Vince. Is there anybody else on Zoom?
Council Chair, move to...
Well, let's just make sure, please.
No.
Madam Clerk?
I didn't see any stand-up.
Nobody else on Zoom that has public comments? Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Okay, motion to adjourn made by Councilman Ray Muscat, seconded by Councilman Badun.